Hi. I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order, and remind everyone that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful like lawn mowers. I will ask that everyone be charging a salute to the flag.
Salute to the flag, up in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll be chairing the meeting tonight because Jonathan Pope, his mother, Charlotte Pope, passed away a couple days ago at the lovely age of 102. So we all send our condolences to his family. So that is why I am here. Oral communications, if anybody would like to speak to the committee, they have up to three minutes. Seeing none, we will move on. Next item of business is recognitions.
I'd like to have a recognition. I have an email that I received on September 6th from a parent, a parent of East Gloucester child, which has children, and I like to read events in priority because it's about our secretary, our education administrator professional, and East Gloucester. Dear Mrs. Pascarello and Dr. Saffire, I wanted to take a moment to talk about my son and his first day of second grade at East Gloucester. The boy had a really hard time on the walk to school and even hard time getting into the building. Lots of really hard crying and anxiety. My husband was at his wit's end as this is not typical behavior from the student. Kathy Doe, the school secretary, stepped up to the plate immediately, did everything in her power to make the student feel calm, safe, and ready to learn. I cannot thank her enough for showing my son that when he is at school, he is loved by everyone in the building from the moment he walks in. As a teacher myself, I am never able to experience the first day of school with my own children as I am spending it with the children of others. Knowing I am sending my kids off to such a warm environment makes me proud as a parent and as a Gloucester resident. The child came home yesterday full of stories of his day, but he kept referring back to how Mrs. Doe helped him when he was sad. Last, secretaries rarely get the credit they deserve. They are the first face you see as you enter the building. They set the tone for the day of quite literally everyone who walks in. Their job is under-recognized and incredibly important. I believe in please and thank you, being nice to others, giving credit where it is due. While yesterday started off on a trying note, it was the kindness, compassion, professionalism, and empathy of others who turned it around. I am and will continue to be extremely grateful.
Very nice.
Very nice. I invited Kathy and Amy to come tonight, but unfortunately Kathy has a bereavement obligation, so she was not able to come. But she is aware of that, and we do this.
Anything else? People want recognition? It seems that the DPDW did a good job getting our schools ready for welcoming both teachers and students this year. So we thank them for all their work over the summer and for getting our schools looking great to welcome back everybody. We have, I'm trying to stall Elizabeth, but we have some new faces for our Student Council representatives. Caroline Muniz, Delaney Benchoff, and Elizabeth Schuster, who is on her way. If you guys would like to say a little bit about yourselves, then welcome.
Sure. So I'm Delaney Benchoff. For those of you who don't know me, I know, I know some of you guys. Basically, I'm a senior at Gloucester High School. I'm the Student Council Executive Board Treasurer. I am the interact president. I know most of you from that as well. I am the deputy president. I'm involved with a bunch of stuff, NHS, all that jazz. So it's nice seeing you guys here. Some of you guys again, see you at board meetings and all that stuff later.
I'm Caroline Muniz. I am in Student Council. I am the secretary of the executive board, also a member of the regular Student Council, also a part of the interact club, as well as a basketball and lacrosse player. I also am a part of NHS and I am happy to be here.
So you must give the report first. What's going on?
So, well, I don't know. We, in terms of, we came here to mostly talk about the snack shop and fundraising for Student Council. So if you wanted to delay that, we can talk about that now if you'd like as well. So we, basically, for, obviously, you guys all know, the school snack shop in terms of the seniors. Every year, the seniors take over the student snack shop, and it generates about $100 every day for the students, which totals to about 18 grand that we're losing out for our Student Council, which goes to prom, semi, senior banquet, all of that, graduation, senior gifts, class gifts, all of that stuff. So we wanted to talk a lot about that and why it's not really part of our culture anymore at Gloucester High School and how we have a new vending machine, which doesn't work, really. We have an additional lunch lady that's there managing that and having to spend her time over there with the students, helping to work on that with less healthy food than we had previously at the snack shop, with the student snack shop, and kind of interactions, the personal interactions that we had and how that's kind of vanished with the presence of the vending machine.
It's also a part of, like, almost like an exciting part for us as Student Council members to be able to take over something like that. And we kind of don't have that anymore. And it also costs us a lot of money because now our prom tickets and other expenses, more like semi and prom, are going to be greater for students than compared to like previous years with people who had the snack shop.
Yeah. And due to that, because we don't have as much money of fundraising and only so much time and abilities that we can for the fundraising for Student Council and these big events, they become costly, they're nearly doubling price for the tickets for prom and semi and all of these events. Senior banquet, which is an annual tradition for the family, not as, like, not just the seniors as well, which kind of makes it biased in terms of who can afford to go to these events, which we don't want to have any financial discrimination almost and who can afford to show up to a prom, you know?
Okay.
That's a lot.
We did deal with this last year as a committee. The seniors at the time came forward to, I guess they came from subcommittee and then to full committee, making the case that they were caught off guard, that it wasn't, that it was being taken away or being, you know, not being allowed to be operated. The principal, I believe, when were you notified that it probably wasn't going to happen this year?
Of last year?
Yeah, I was notified probably at the beginning of last year, but it was kind of still up in question.
Yeah, but it was like final by like any year. It was for sure done.
One of the best things about having Student Council at our meetings is this exact example of what's happening. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, hearing it from the kids, because we receive a lot of reports from subcommittees and different administrators, but when you hear it from the kids that feel it, see it, touch it every day, it makes, to me, it makes it more real. Like Kathy said, we did discuss this last year, and there's a lot of circumstances behind the reasons why we made the decision that we made. And we were hoping that by giving you a year in advance notice that you could come up with some other ideas for fundraising. And I think those even offers from us to even try to help you do that. And evidently, that didn't happen. So I'm sure it's very frustrating for you right now to be in this position because you see an opportunity and all your reasoning is so good and pure and for the right reasons, but it gets a little bit more complicated on our end. So I'm grateful that you brought it forward. Even though we had the discussion, I would hope that somehow we could kick this to finance or something just to look at the topic again and see if there's any different considerations to consider with the vending machines now. That's new to the district. So I'd be curious to hear at least a little bit of a discussion from a higher level back on this topic again. I don't know if our decision would change, but I think we owe it to you to at least have that conversation and to take it a step further. It might be good if you even come to our meetings and hear the discussion and see the process that we go through when we make difficult decisions. This is one of those topics that we, we want to help kids. We want you to have all the money that you need so that you're not depending on your families and other abilities to get money, especially when there's not opportunities for kids to get money. But at the same time, we have responsibilities to taxpayers and to our own departments and to budget obligations and things like that. So it's part of a bigger picture. So I think this is a good example for you to learn how school committees function and what your role is and how your voice is important, but at the same time, see what we go through when we struggle to come to a decision because we don't always agree with each other. But yet, we have to come to some sort of consensus. So I think this would be a great opportunity right from the start of school for you to get involved with us and see, can't guarantee a different outcome, but you might have a better understanding of why things are the way they are. So I thank you for bringing it forward and welcome you both for being here.
As the Budget Finance Subcommittee or Building Finance Subcommittee Chair, if you did come to our meetings, you would have heard that we, the actual food service is working in, you know, a multiple hundred thousand dollar deficit. To have a competing organization for those same dollars, it was, it makes us, you know, that's a lot of money that we have to funnel away from the classrooms. So we are in a really, you know, as far as budgetary wise, it puts us in a really tough position. Very welcome and want to hear how the vending machines, if there is problems with them, what we need to do about that to make those better. If the food is not adequate, we definitely need to hear that. We want to know, we want it to be the best outcome that can be, but we're also trying to fund a district. And this is one of the areas that we, that we hope to capitalize on is the vending machines in all schools. So just to let you know where our side's coming from. But we want to hear, if things aren't working, we want to know about it.
I mean, personally, I haven't used it, but I know from people that I've talked to about it because we've had this conversation amongst peers and other Student Council members, obviously, about the difference and why it's kind of one versus the other almost. And I know that it's kind of been more, instead of automatic, it's been more manual. Like, the whole time, there's a lunch lady standing over there and the door's open because they would eat the dollars. So now the lunch lady has to take time out of her day to go over there, man that have like 50 kids waiting in line, like blocking everything up at the rest of like the food. So I know that it just hasn't been the most flawless process so far.
Maria, the parent.
Yes, I have a son at the high school, and he was very excited about the vending machine. And my understanding is you can use your...
Yes.
Your food card, yeah, your student ID in the vending machine, but there's an additional PIN number that you have to put after your student ID number. And I don't think those have gone out yet. So that's why the cash thing is happening and that may be a problem. But once the PIN numbers come out, it should be smooth.
We also had a proposal of, I know this is kind of just like jumping the gun a lot to process at once, but we wanted to also throw out the idea of having, if we weren't able to have a continuous snack shop having it open, I know we discussed it on like holidays or special events, but we also reached out to some administrators and talking about, like, what's more special than back to school? And no one really replied back to us. And we were talking about, we only have three home football games or having kind of events like that on Fridays because it's like our last year and having those last three games are homecoming or stuff like that. And we haven't really received any feedback in terms of that as well, so.
So you're waiting for an answer from the administration at the school?
We're just kind of interested in bringing up that event because I personally wasn't here, obviously, at last year's meetings and talking about what the circumstances were for these special occasions or if that was even a conversation, that's just what I've heard. But in terms of that, we were wondering about what our possibilities are and what our limits are in terms of having those events.
We did talk about that. We did talk about kinds more sporadic things that you could try to raise money around.
Obviously, we should have a conversation with the high school administration, with the food service director, with our CFO, and see what wiggle room there is to offer some opportunity. And as Mr. Gross mentioned, you're up against certain financial constraints, which is the root of the issue.
Our next Building and Finance meeting is on September...
September next week, I think.
Next week, next Wednesday at 5:00. Is everybody playing sports next Wednesday at 5:00?
We won't have enough information to let me know.
Well, we could talk about the specialty then. We could at least update that.
What specialty then?
I would suggest that Dr. Saffire, Principal Cook, and their leadership, student leadership group get together, have a formal meeting, and then bring it to us. That way, you can hash out a lot of things and learn a lot from each other and then bring it to us.
Do we even need to be involved in that?
Not, again, they need to be.
Or at all?
Yeah, I would let them see if they can work it out and then if they need us, then bring it to us. That's my suggestion.
I think it needs to come back if there's a decision made because we have to amend a policy to allow it.
I think it is in our procedures that does say something about, I think there is something in there about at your discretion. So I don't think it needs to be amended. I remember it, yes. Okay, welcome Elizabeth Schuster.
Hi, I'd like to apologize. I'm Elizabeth Schuster, I'm the executive president of Student Council of DHS. We won 1-0, Sedona Gillard had the goal with the line "High Misses."
So everybody else told us a little bit about themselves. We were hoping you might do so.
All right, what would you like to know? Obviously, I'm a senior. I, being, aside from being executive president, I'm also the commanding officer of the RTC program at the high school. I'm a three-sport athlete, two of the sports I'm captain's in, softball and soccer. I also play basketball. I love to listen to music. I like to sing. I love to whistle. There's one of my talents is whistling. It's really elegant. What else would you like to add?
That's fun.
She can drive stick shift?
I can drive a stick shift. A little super out there. Just need to walk.
Is there anything else you want to report? What's going on at the high school for...
Did we already say freshman's elections?
Oh, yes, we are having our freshman elections next Tuesday. Forms will be due and collected and organized this Friday. We haven't had too many interested students yet, but we've been pushing it in kind of the freshman classes.
What are the election, what are the...
The Student Council, like the officers from the class representative just for the freshman class in order to kind of get the things rolling in terms of T-shirts for the pep rally, which is October 5th. And that's also going to be the homecoming game. And kind of all of that stuff, organizing their sophomore event next year.
Our sports teams are off to a great start. Our football team had a big win, 29 to 6. Our field hockey team started off their home opener 9-0, shutout from Saugus. We started ours, we started soccer season out with a 3-0 or 2-0 win against Lynn English. So we're all off to a pretty good start, hoping, all teams hoping to make the tournament.
Something you might be interested in, Mr. Cook and I are discussing a Student Government Day that would be scheduled for sometime in the spring, probably in April. It would probably involve perhaps upwards of 10 students who'd have an opportunity to meet with city council. Hopefully, the mayor, once we invite her as well, to ask them some interview questions, learn about the process. You'd probably be invited to sit in on at least one city council meeting to get that experience and see what that's about. And then ultimately, have those students create a mock city council meeting, probably for your, for the freshmen, the grade nine, because there's a lot of stuff that they do with respect to civics and government. So we're in the process of just formulating that now. And just wanted to give you a heads up that you might hear about that.
Sounds good. Well, thank you for your report. You are welcome to stay, but you are not required to stay, so whatever.
And most of the house.
And we will try to let you know if there's anything in particular on the agenda, that it would be great to have your input because you are welcome to participate in our discussions as well.
Just keep us updated. I'm sure you could figure out our emails if it's not. It's just our first and last names at Gloucester Schools. So just email us. Great. Thank you for having us.
Thanks for having us.
Have a great night.
Okay, the next order of business is the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like to remove?
Remove that we approved, your consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Answers unanimously. Next item is deliberations on educational issues.
In case there, I guess there aren't any questions about the 1833.40 for the West Parish PTO, 1835 about the replacement of cafeteria. Dr. Immel is here if you'd like to hear what she has to say about it.
We do. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Good evening, thanks for having me tonight. We have had a very passionate group of teachers and parents working to get compostable trays at the elementary at West Parish. And Dedetelip and Jackie Enzlow, two parents, and then the literacy coordinator and green team leader, Adrian Ricky-Munn, really spearheaded that, worked very closely with Margaret Jo in the food services. And their job was to raise the difference between what the school committee budgeted, budgets for trays and what the additional cost of compostable trays and the disposal of that. So their fundraising efforts raised $3,460. And the PTO wrote a check to the Gloucester Public Schools for what is needed for the trays. So I don't have that number directly in front of me. But then, the Black Earth haulers, we have four recycling bins a week picked up for the compostable trays, and that's $27 a week. So the total cost of the program this year that, from the fundraising money, is $2,816. The PTO cuts the check directly to Black Earth haulers for their weekly renewal of the compostable trays. And then what you're accepting would go to food services to pay the difference of styrofoam versus compostable trays. Happy to answer any other questions, but they've done a great job and routine's going well. We have two, we have three trash bins in the cafeteria and then the two recycling trays. And so the students know to dump their trash in the black bag and put their tray in the green bag, and it's going really well. Custodians have been helpful, staff, water system in the cafeteria have been great, and it's working out really well so far.
These are the actual trays that the food actually sits in. Do we still have like the plastic flat trays that things go on top of? Or they just hold their single tray?
Yeah, just that we just have paper styrofoam, so we have paper trays.
We were in school, the plastic, thick plastic.
Yeah, yeah, and you did the tray on, yeah.
That they washed and actually put in dishwasher?
Are you slipping down a hill or something?
Sweetie, what was the reaction from the kids doing this? So each year, our green, so unfortunately, our green team is always our fifth graders. So the students who really put this in place are our sixth graders at O'Malley right now. And our green team leader is out on maternity leave. So our green team won't really start up for the year until she comes back. So the students last year, our fifth graders who really spearheaded this, you know, went to, they spoke at Austin Gloucester to try to get a thousand dollar grant. So they, they talked to PTO. They've done a lot of advocating and making themselves knowledgeable about reducing our carbon footprint. And so they're passionate about that. And then Amos Telip is a fourth grader, so he hasn't been on our green team, but he was really working hard with his mom this summer to get this going this year too. So kids are excited about it.
Through the process, did you find out how many other schools or kind of what the trend is or...
I know Rockport and Manchester Essex both do it. I don't know if it's just compostable trays or if it's composting also. That would be, Mrs. Ricky-Munn's dream would be for us to also compost the food. Right now, we are, and we are just doing the paper trays and not composting food. So every school kind of does it a little bit differently depending on the setup of their cafeteria and the flow. Our custodians' most, biggest concern was that they could get the tables cleaned between our fast transitions in the cafeteria, and we've been able to work that out with them. Adding more stations of recycling and composting will just take more engineering for us in the cafeteria flow.
All right, plan. I see there's 500 also coming from GEF?
Yes. Maggie Rose has donated directly to GEF and GEF got a check.
And is that for also purchasing trays or...
GEF wrote it to the PTO. So it's, again, it all kind of funneled to the PTO.
So it's part of the $1,800 check from PTO?
Yes. It's not something specifically coming from GEF to the school district. It all went to the West Parish PTO, which is a 501(c)(3). And then they have kind of been balancing the difference. So the little bits left over will stay in a line for green team and whether we need it for compostable trays or Black Earth haulers next year or some other project that the green team wants to do will stay in a line for, in the PTO for the green team for continued efforts.
We have that grant coming to us in our package.
Right. The check is written to the school district.
Yeah, I think it did go to the district.
Okay, so it's an addition.
But you're marked, you're marked for that.
Right, exactly. So it's an addition to the 1800.
I apologize.
Okay.
I just remember it went to the...
Yeah, so the PTO requested it through GEF. GEF gave it, so that makes more sense.
Apologizing.
Can't hold so...
It's a bubble beaker.
It's a bubble beaker.
You might as well stay up because, you might as well stay scary. The next item is Gloucester Education Foundation Annual Presentation, and we have the Executive Director, Tino Baimo, here. But this is an address.
Thank you, Kathy. Hello, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to give you an update on the Gloucester Education Foundation and our work in the schools over the past year. It's been a good one, and GEF has provided a lot of new and interesting programs in our schools. When we come out into the community, people ask us a lot, how do you decide what to fund? How do you, how do you evaluate this? Where do you get your ideas? Sometimes the administration comes to us with an idea for something that they would like to implement. Sometimes we have an idea, we go to the administration and work on that collaboratively. But some of the very best ideas that we fund come from the teachers and the staff in the district. Last year, the GEF board went out to all of the schools and we spoke, the different board members spoke at the different schools at staff meetings and talked to them about GEF and how we fund things and encouraged them to bring their ideas to us. Well, a lot of them weren't listening because the overwhelming majority of funding requests last year came directly from our teachers. I will give you a brief rundown. GEF partially funded a project at Gloucester High School, teen mental health first aid, which provided training to about 90 staff members at the school on recognizing warning signs of emotional distress in students and how to make appropriate referrals to services for help. This was prompted by a request from the school adjustment counselor. Teachers at Veterans Memorial School came to us with a unique approach to social-emotional learning at their school. We funded a program to incorporate literature into social-emotional teaching in conjunction with the Second Step program. Students are exposed to new literature books and then take part in structured activities that prompt them to reflect on what is going on in their own lives and relate this to the book that they've just experienced. GEF funded a sale of Worthy Ardel for marine biology and oceanography students at Gloucester High. GEF responded to teacher requests at O'Malley and Gloucester High School for a joint program that was offered in conjunction with the Mass Audubon Society. Climate Change and Coastal Communities was a year-long study of the science behind climate change and how it may impact communities like Gloucester in the future. The program provided classroom instruction with field, with trips into the field to make observations and collect data, and culminated with a presentation to the community about the... and culminated with a presentation to the community about the findings. The three D printer facility at Gloucester High School was expanded last year with the purchase of additional printers and the creation of a freestanding three D lab in the art wing of the school. This is now being used by students in the design and manufacturing program. And the use of three D printing is also expanded to the library where it's available to all students and also to our CAD program. At East Gloucester School, the literacy coach approached us with an idea to implement the use of touchscreen Chromebooks for very young students in grades K through one, this was a pilot project, so that they can have access to online programs that will help them build literacy skills such as Lexia. These programs can also be used at home on home computers and smartphones, which means that children can use these outside of the school day and parents can get involved in their children's learning. The music teacher and Doc Siders, the leader at the high school, came to us with a request for new funds for an audio system, which we, which we purchased. This will improve the quality of the group's performance, but more than that, it will be the basis of a new course that he hopes to implement in music technology to give students new skills in mixing and sound engineering. A parent at O'Malley approached us with a challenge grant last year, said that the sound system at O'Malley could be upgraded for the theater. We all remember The Lion King. GEF was able to raise additional funds from other parents and community supporters with the, with incredible assistance from the Gloucester DPW. The, the new sound system was installed just in time for the spring musical production of Shrek. Another Gloucester parent came to us last year with an idea for a new program in the realm of wellness. She's a physical therapy assistant and provided a series of classes in the high school anatomy and physiology department, focusing on the biomechanics of the human body and how this knowledge can be used to prevent injury. The high school life skills teacher approached GEF with a request for support for music therapy to build collaboration and self-confidence among her students. They participated in a series of six classes at Inner Harmony in downtown Gloucester. Teachers at the Gloucester Alternative Program requested funds to work with their students to construct a tower garden at the school so that students there could have a science lab and also learn about growing their food and nutrition. One of the theater, one of the theater teachers at O'Malley received a GEF grant to purchase iPads for her programs so that her students can learn skills in videography and filmmaking using iMovie software. Two very motivated teachers at Beeman ran a fantastic program this summer with GEF support, the Summer Steam Camp. This was a six-week program focusing on engineering, using the Engineering as Elementary curriculum developed by the Boston Museum of Science. Students were given a series of engineering challenges each week that they needed to solve. Students also worked with Scratch, which is a child-friendly computer coding program developed by MIT. And according to the teachers, a lot of them would work on this at home, they really, they really got into the, the coding. And finally, when the after-school program at O'Malley, O'Malley Academy was funded for another cycle by the state and was named an exemplary program, one of the conditions of the funding was that the district put up twenty-five thousand dollars towards, it was a sort of matching, partial matching situation. So the administrative staff involved in the program came to GEF for help. And last year, we provided fifteen thousand of the needed twenty-five thousand, with the rest coming from two other sources. GEF is continuing to raise funds for this important initiative, which benefits more than two hundred students a year at O'Malley. And there are more things to come. Over the summer, GEF received a grant to provide a new printing press and supplies for a new printmaking studio at Gloucester High School, which was requested by the fine arts teacher, the studio arts teacher. We have received funds for the upgrade of the robotics program at the high school, and we'll be working with the robotics teacher to bring the latest generation of robotic software and technology into the program. And funding has been approved, not yet received, but approved for the high school physics program, and we will soon be making a nice grant to the district for the purchase of vernier sensors and other equipment that will accelerate hands-on experimentation for our physics students, along with a six-year subscription to an online textbook system for the program. And then next, next week, Applied Materials, which is a local company right up here and which has been very generous under of, of GEF and the Gloucester Schools, will be doing a community involvement day where their, their employees will be putting together kits of school supplies for all of our elementary teachers and then delivering them to the schools. And that's, they, they donated the funds for the supplies, which was worth about sixteen hundred dollars. And of course, many of our ongoing programs will continue, after-school music for our students, programs in, in the elementary school, and theater and dance, countdown to kindergarten, and of course, support for the district-wide arts festival. In doing all of this, GEF has maintained a close relationship with the district. Last year alone, last year alone, our collaboration brought in nearly two hundred thousand dollars for these programs. And over the, over the years, GEF has raised and leveraged over seven million dollars on behalf of the Gloucester Schools. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that our work is possible only because we exist in a very caring and generous community. The support that GEF, GEF receives from our supporters, including many of you here in this room, is the lifeblood that fuels GEF and pumps innovation into the schools. GEF's board is a group of hard-working and dedicated volunteers who care about Gloucester's children and the schools. And all of us are grateful for the collaboration that we have with our district leadership, and I'm grateful for the incredible generosity of the Gloucester community. As we like to say, we are helping our students think the best. I also want to remind you of one other, one other item. Our annual celebration invitations will be going out next week. All of you will be invited. It's going to be on Friday, October nineteenth, at the North Shore Arts Association from five-thirty to eight. So please keep an eye out for your invitations, and, and please try to attend if you can. It's a great opportunity to thank our donors. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about Applied Materials? What, because I didn't hear about this until tonight. They're donating through you or through themselves, or how is, how is that working?
They, they have donated money to us, and we have done purchasing for them. But they, their employees are going to be gathering one day next week to assemble tote bags that are going to be filled with basic school supplies, blue sticks, posted pads, pencils, pens, erasers, pens and pens. For all, for all the elementary schools. And, you know, for the, for all the classroom teachers, the special education teachers.
We should probably accept that gift.
Definitely. I'm glad we accept the gift from Applied Materials, as just explained.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Very grateful.
Very grateful. Nice to be.
Any other questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Tina?
Thank you for all the hard work you do.
Thank you for your support. Hope to see you on the nineteenth.
Thank you.
May I just say one thing before Tina steps out?
Sure.
That's okay? Sorry, I can't get away with that. I just have thirty seconds because one of the things that goes unspoken and it wasn't in the list because it's Tina herself. Just in the last couple of days, we've been back and forth about a grant that Tina has been writing, and I've met with a science partner, and I just sent her an email the other day just letting her know what an extraordinary piece of work the grant was that she wrote under with very little information and a short timeline. And I'm just reminded continually that one of the greatest assets that we have in our partnership is the work that you do as the executive director, but also as an extraordinary grant writer and a really good listener to, to us and to the teachers and, and the work that you do in bringing in money from other sources is, it's invaluable. Not sure how we would make it without that, and personally, I think you're great.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of blurbs from our principals at our schools talking about the openings and the consensus is that everything has opened up extremely smoothly. Beeman had some freshly painted classrooms. There have been repairs made to playground equipment, and I know that the school committee had been made aware of that last spring. Those issues have been attended to. East Gloucester has welcomed many new students, along with the students who have already been attending. They've already had their first fire drill, had an all-call meeting to discuss expectations and how to connect as a community. And of course, that last Thursday was extremely difficult. Be, East Gloucester is one of the schools that gets very, very warm. The principal, Amy Pasquarella, went out and bought popsicles for everyone after lunch and that just helped to get them through those last hour or two before the end of school. And thank goodness, and hopefully, we won't see another day like that between now and the fall. Plum Cove, the reports, everything is very smooth, people are settling in. The, the overall sense is one of very positive sense out there. And they also had their first fire drill, which went off without a hitch. Veterans also reports a very positive opening. All the schools look very good. We've already thanked the DPW, can't thank them enough for their, for their efforts. There are seven new staff members at Veterans Elementary School this year, and according to the principal, already making a difference. Like the other elementaries, everybody's working on building communities. They had their first Monday morning meeting a couple of days ago, and moving forward. West Parish talks about routine building, community building. Students, in fact, that sort of bit of this, are writing their hopes and dreams for the year, which I presume they'll go back to at the end of the school year and see what they wrote and how they've done. And they have their, this week, they're having their harvest and tasting day with the backyard growers. There'll be some harvesting taking place across the entire district. They have Instrument Demonstration Day for fourth and fifth graders who might want to become, participate in our afternoon program. One correction with Tina, the budgeting that we have, which is part operating funds, part Gloucester Education Foundation, and we do have some student activity slash revolving account monies. But that's also for the middle school as well, something that, so it's both middle school and elementary as an end-school instrumental program. At O'Malley, they are at six hundred and forty-five students. They have had their introductory assemblies with their new principal. We did last Thursday call an early release because the building itself does normally have air conditioning, and it was built with air conditioning in mind, which means that there are less windows, less ventilation without the units themselves working. But otherwise, things have gotten off without any other glitches. We did postpone the Chromebook distribution from that Thursday night till this past Monday. And both at the high school and at the middle school, the Chromebooks have been distributed, and according to our IT director, things have gone very, very well. At Gloucester High School, they are rolling out the welcome mat for their ninth graders. Welcoming seems to be the theme that has gone through, beginning with orientation, through the beginning of school and classes. And as I mentioned, the one-to-one Chromebook laptop initiative now includes all grades nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Item number two is just a reminder for the school committee members who are liaisons to the different schools. The open houses are coming up. I won't read off the dates you have in your report, but just did want to remind you about that. There is a little bit of housekeeping going on with respect to, to respective policies and procedures, both health-related, and we'll mention a little bit about business as well. Our medical emergency response plans have been reviewed and have been submitted by, which is an obligation to the Department of Education. The concussion policy is also under review, as is our defibrillator policy as well. If there are any changes to those policies, we will obviously be bringing that to the school committee for amendments to the existing documents themselves. The management, emergency management plans are being reviewed. In fact, I think by Friday, they're supposed to submit their changes here to central office. On September eleventh, and again on September eighteenth, Lieutenant Gossem and the police department are meeting with our elementary principals and the various staffs at the schools in order to update on the training and talk about simulations and drills, which will then ultimately later on in the fall incorporate students as well. And we want to make sure that the exercises are age-appropriate. We want to ensure that we will be communicating to our parents so that they understand that this is a simulation and for the protection of their children. We'll be following a lot of the procedures that we used last year with the middle and the high school, but in fashion that is age-appropriate. As far as the, the middle school and the high school, both are anticipating simulated drills sometime between October fifteenth and the end of October. They're both reviewing that, both are reaching out to Lieutenant Gossem as we speak. And the high school in particular is reviewing to try to become more specific in its response, incorporating Alice. Last year, I think they chose sides, who's going to leave and who's going to stay. This year, I think they're going to be handing over more of a decision-making to the teachers in the classrooms themselves based upon the scenario that is placed upon them. So they are continuing to learn from those experiences. All of them, the first of, of at least two at the buildings should be completed then by the end of October. Item number four, just to mention that the district did hold a moment of silence on September the eleventh at eight forty-six. I asked the schools particularly, again, at the elementaries, to come up with some age-appropriate explanations that indicate that love of country, love of flag, there are many who defend our country. Sometimes things can go wrong and people get injured or what have you. But to commemorate, and we realize that September eleventh, two thousand and one, possibly some of our seniors were born at that time. So like things that you want metaphorically in the rear-view window, we need to find ways of continually to honor these things, but to provide explanations and rationale that young children can understand. Gloucester High School is in the midst and is very active right now in its accreditation update. Every ten years, ten years, I guess everything should change, but it does seem as if, in my experience, every time that NEAS comes up with new ways in which they approach the accreditation process. This time around, the high school is responsible for completing a self-reflection report. And that, in essence, is what they're going to work on until the actual visitation, which takes place in the fall of two thousand and twenty. In the past, there may be certain standards, and you would report to, to the standards and how the school was meeting and addressing those particular standards. Now they're generally developing a report, which will be reviewed October ninth, tenth by a committee from NEAS. It's called a collaborative conference visit. And the product that will be developed is what's called the School Growth Plan, and that's what's going to drive the work that will take place between now and the visitation in, as I mentioned, two thousand and twenty. Item number six, turning to purchasing and cash procedures. Our CFO, Mr. Frisch, has been working on memorializing and perhaps updating some of the processes and procedures. Procurement and purchasing, we'll be discussing all of these with our leadership team tomorrow at our meeting. But procurement and purchasing, they should be familiar with. This is an annual reminder of the expectations so that everything's done according to specs, as they say. The vending machines for increased revenue for food services, our cash handling procedures for student activity, and cash handling procedures for food service also will be reviewed so that the administrators are aware of them and know what to expect from various staff members. Cash handling procedures, it seems as if we're finally moving toward what was originally cited in an audit, not this past audit last summer, but the previous summer. And this specifically calls for the development by the city of Gloucester of the equivalent. specifically calls for the development by the city of Gloucester of the equivalent of a savings account and a checking account. And then the principals can draw upon the student activity accounts by writing a check. Under all circumstances, and Gary has been meeting weekly with the city's auditor, under all circumstances, a purchase order in order to, for the paper trail has to be produced. If there is an event coming up, let's say a Halloween bash of some sort, so to put a purchase order together now in advance and in anticipation is a normal course of action. If there's something that comes up which requires a very quick turnaround for some cash, the principal can write a check and then they simply need to write a purchase order that afternoon. It doesn't have to be before the check. If it's something that, something comes up and they absolutely need the money as quickly as possible. And then food service, they need to be aware of, but it's just a reminder of the quality assurance, the security, the safety, deposit procedures, all that kind of business so that that'll be fresh in everybody's minds.
What are the checks and balances for that? Does the principal have the final authority or do you put oversight to what their purchase order says?
Oh.
Is there any discretion where the principal wants to do it, they can do it as long as the procedure is right? Or do they have to ask to some extent?
There's a workflow that they approve it and I have to approve it before it comes to a purchase order.
Okay.
So that's a check and balance.
Yeah.
If the check's been written, how does that work? It's like our staff area said, they need the money immediately, they can write the check and then later the purchase order. If they write a check for $1,000, you deny it, what happens? You don't approve the purchase order, the money's already gone.
We're going over the, you know, what are the parameters that they can write a check? They're limited to 5,000 for the middle school and the high school. The elementaries are 2, 2,500. So we're looking at checks in the neighborhood of 250 dollars. So we have some parameters they have to follow.
Thanks.
So their, their balance can only be 2,500?
I'm sorry, yes, exactly.
Now, I'm a little human nature and it's, there's this catch-all of the process that allows you to, what Joel was just talking about, write the check and I get the PO. I can, I can envision everything becoming the emergency purchase because it got let go too long. So I wonder if there's going to be a message sent out that you'll get refused when you do that. You know, this cannot be common practice. You have to have a really valid reason why this is an emerg, it's an emergency purchase.
Right. And I imagine if we don't send out that message, I wouldn't be surprised if the city auditor begins to ask for this as well, which would give us a little bit more cloud in that particular.
Now, we actually addressed this two years ago with the city that lacked me on creating the bank accounts.
Right.
It was not us.
We do not have full implementation. We're, we're working with a.
Working towards, so we, we did all we could do. But things are still working fine. It's just it's no longer in our hands. That's, that's the only point. And we, we did our best.
But also another check would be, I would assume principals are expected to have money in their budget to be making any kind of expenditure anyway, right? They're not overspending by just writing a check. Hopefully, it's something that they know where, who's budget money for it.
Yeah. That's the general fund, the Student Activity Fund.
Oh, okay.
Is, they have to request a reimbursement. So we'll be seeing all those purchase orders. If there's any that are emergency, we'll see those. If they don't fall within the parameters of what's proper and acceptable, then they can, you know, be reduced in their reimbursement request.
A deposit, for example, for rental for a room for a prom or one of those kinds. From the class of 2019, the check would be cut to student activity check. And that is something, obviously, purchase order should go in first. So, you know, I guess what I'm hearing is that as we monitor, Gary, the requests that come in.
Right.
It would need to see a disconnect between the check and the time when the event's taken place. And if that's only suggesting, it seems a bit of a blur, and these could have come in sooner than we would have to save our PPT. They need to take care of business.
Right. We can look at, why wasn't this done in advance?
Right.
And we'll see the time lag.
And also, we need to make sure that the money is spent for the appropriate purposes and not for classroom supplies or things that are supposed to come out of general fund. That's not what the student activity account's about, so.
Right. The Student Activity Fund is for the, on behalf of the students.
Right. Exclusively on behalf of students.
Yes, exclusively.
All right. Now, the next item, number seven, is NSAT. If you recall, the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School Partnership.
If I could, just one more thing. The student activity account that was in that snack shop should have been a student activity account.
Discuss that by this.
I'm just, I'm just using that as an example.
We're ready to, we're ready to.
With that money flowing through the proper channels.
And we can share some of these, we can certainly share some of these procedures with the NF if you're interested in seeing them. The NSAT partnership is moving at full throttle. That is to say that we've just about finished and touches on the memorandum of understanding, which would run from this year through, through the end of June. The actual program itself would go from January through June. The construction and craft labor is Local 22. We'll be providing the teacher. And on Thursday, we secured money from John and Molly Burns, who are making a donation to pay for the transportation. So in terms of cost, we have that covered. The NSAT is applying to for a skilled capital grant for some resources and materials. I've not seen the grant. I've written a letter of reference and sent that off. So I don't know what the, I'm not questioning how much they're asking for. Again, it's resource and materials. And we'll see how that goes. But right now, everything appears to be a go. The memorandum of agreement speaks to guidance departments working together, designating one of our guidance councils as the lead with respect to this particular program. Fairly soon, our councils will begin identifying students who are not part of our vocational program at this time, who very well may not have a sense of what they want to do when graduation comes. So we'll be looking for cohort from our grade 11 students. They would be attending, from Monday through Thursday, they would be at Gloucester High School up through lunch, let's say, in times to be determined, taking their academic courses here. And then they would be taking the bus out to Essex Tech. I would presume that they'd be working in the vocational piece somewhere around between 1 o'clock and 4 o'clock. The program in its inception will include landscaping, carpentry, and masonry. And then NSAT already has a 4 o'clock bus which comes back. And so they'll be bringing them back at that time as well. On Fridays, they'll be at the high school for the entire day, but the Local 22, CCLU Local 22, will have a representative here. In the afternoon, these students will be with them to learn all about certificate programs, employability, hot something or other, I can't remember what it is. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Hot Works?
Hot Works. There is all sorts of programs related to the, the field itself that they will be working with. And we are in the process of looking to see what monies can be secured so that next school year, this program can continue. Students who make their way through the program will receive some certification and credentials regarding skills completed. And the union is ready to warmly embrace them and offer them apprenticeships upon graduation.
Can I just say, maybe, go quickly. First, I just want to commend the staff here for working with the administration up at NSAT. I am so excited about this for several reasons. Not just because it involves vocational education, but knowing that I'm leaving that school committee in December, which is very bittersweet to me, the one hope I had before I left was to see a strong bridge built between Gloucester and NSAT because it's difficult for me to sit on two committees, seeing one that struggles in an area and seeing one that succeeds, knowing that we're supposed to be partners. And this is the first sign I see of that partnership. Dr. Riccio, the superintendent up at the tech, is new. She's a first-time superintendent and she's new this year. And she gained all my support when I heard that she was involved with a program like this out in Medford in her prior administration, administrative career. And so when I heard what she could do and see that it's being brought here, it's, it's so exciting. And also, this is the first program that's being done by NSAT and Gloucester's the model for that. Dr. Riccio's already talking about grants that Governor Baker is making available. Governor Baker wants to expand opportunities for vocational education and have kids have more access. And this program is perfect for a grant opportunity through that. So I'm hoping that you will see next year's paid focus. I know Dr. Riccio is going to reach out with her collaborators and her contacts to try to make that happen. So this is just so amazing, so awesome. And I can't commend our district and the work at NSAT for making this happen because I think a lot of kids are going to benefit from this once they see what can come out of it, the certifications that can come out of it, just by giving a couple extra hours of their day.
We're also hoping, and we've been talking about both the, the union, students from NSAT and our students helping to refurbish our vocational classrooms hopefully by next summer. So I'm trying to keep that on the front burner as much as possible as well. We need at least a makeover and if not something more in terms of making our programs really look presentable and bring them up to speed.
And as my understanding is, should we hook you up with the furniture trust too?
Uh, there was, yeah, this.
We're getting a lot of furniture.
A lot of the stuff will do culinary, so that's kind of, there is a cabinet, something grant that I need to take a look at and see if that's something that isn't, we would be eligible for. And yeah, I have to look up the furniture trust and see what's, or not me, but I have to help spearhead with the vocational teachers. If there's stuff that they feel can, can furnish, get into the programs, then we'll go after it.
And that's a lifelong, that's a lifelong partnership with them. It's not just what they have now. I mean, it's stuff constantly coming in. So that was where you hooked up for us on that.
Moving forward. Item number eight, Model MOU. Some of the regulations by the state have been crystallized and modified, and they have sent us a rather lengthy Model Memorandum of Understanding for School Resource Officers. You do have it in your packet if you're having difficulty getting to sleep tonight.
Very.
I will be, I will be sharing it with the chief of police. We do have a job description that we have agreed upon, but not an official memorandum of understanding. This, as I said, has been brought up to speed. I think, aside from delineating the various details, there's a sense to avoid and ensure, just like with grants, that with a school resource officer, you're not supplanting any disciplinary staff positions or anything like that that you have in the schools, but rather supplementing them. It just seems to be a thread that goes through the MOU itself. And then there's some very clear information, mission statement and objectives, structure and governance, supervision, chain of command, types of commitments for both police departments, integrating the SRO, things that through our experience, we're already doing. This will help to put it into print and clarify. So we'll be approaching the Gloucester Police Department with this MOU and see where we get. Item number nine, Mass Health School-Based Medicaid Program. As you know, there are certain health services that are reimbursed by the state. Up until recently, July 1st, 2019, that almost exclusively had to do with health services that were included in an individualized education plan, an IEP. The new regulations have expanded coverage for Medicaid reimbursement, not only to IEPs, but to individual healthcare plans and to family service plans as well, which means that there's more opportunity to provide reimbursable services for students. Medicaid by regulation, Medicaid reimbursement regulation goes directly back to the city, but the extent to which there is increased availability for our students and further reimbursement to the city, it will have, hopefully, served its purpose. And last, just a point of information regarding Department of Ed. And they are asking feds for a waiver from a limit on alternate assessments. The Every Student Succeeds Act has a 1% cap on the number of students that technically are eligible for alternate assessments, where are substantially separate students, rest students with intensive disabilities and the rest. So the Department of Education will be asking for a waiver of that 1% on a statewide basis. And for the record, we had 29 students in Gloucester who took the alternate assessment and that made up for 0.9%. So we were underneath the 1% cap.
Okay. Any other, any questions? I have a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
So, second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Right.
Okay. Computers back to us. Next item of business is meeting first, and I think that falls to me. Because program has met twice since we last met. The first meeting was mostly, was primarily the vocational, review of vocational program and this particular partnership in particular. So is there anything else you would like to add on to that?
Everything I may. Just to remind, the Burton's grant will be sent up by October 1st. The vocational teachers are putting together the budget so that I have the figures, then I can send out the grant. Gary and Mr. Cook and myself have also been meeting at the, and we put together a safety survey checklist. These are obligatory corrections to the program that need to be done. And we have identified what they are and we have indicated who is responsible, what, what responsibilities each of us has. And Gary has been going through the programs to see if, within the survey chart, if there's an indication that the work has been done. He's confirming that it's been done, where the work needs to go forward. He's making notes of that so that we can begin to cut away from these things. A lot of these things have to do just with signs, making sure that there are proper stop buttons to certain units in the right places, that stored material is stored in the right spots. There are certain kinds of data sheets that need to be done for hazardous chemicals. James has a host of the safety features that he's putting into a sort of a comprehensive memo for the teachers. And they'll need to make sure that there's compliance. There are unapproved loads to the roof system. We're getting information about that, maximum weights, making sure that the floor systems are right. If there's a wood ladder with a defect, it has to be removed and replaced. All this work is getting done. There's about 35 of them. I'm not going to look through, but we are organizing. We know who's got what responsibilities. We had to come up, for example, with a respiratory health program. And we were able to speak, speaking of the partnership, we were able to ask NSAT for their, for their documents, and they've sent it to us. So they got this from Shushing Tech, so it's, it's the way it needs to work. We can now take that and transcribe it for our Gloucester vocational program. So we're chipping away at the safety report as well.
Okay. So, and the other items at that meeting, we, the basic thing, one item was review public relations initiatives. And the superintendent and I need to schedule a meeting with Cory Kugru and a couple of principals and publicists to get on top of what kinds of things they want highlighted in that particular way by what Cory can help us do. The next meeting was just last week, and we had two items on the agenda, audio and video monitoring on our school buses. And we had a discussion over the fact that our new buses actually come with that particular capability. We talked about concern for privacy and, and those things, if you would like to elaborate.
Okay.
On the, I don't need to make a motion to you, give a little background.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Concern about school safety, as we all know, is at an all-time high. And the new contract came to buses that provide both a video and audio component. There's, as far as the video is concerned, the consensus seems to be there's much more comfort with the notion of the video recording taking place on school buses. Audio is a little bit, a little bit more sensitive. There are those that feel that it may be a bit of a bordering on infringement on privacy concerns. But those who argue in favor of audio monitoring are saying that you may see an action, but if there are, when it comes to bullying, there may be verbal assaults, and if the audio allows you to have the evidence, it can serve two functions. One is deterrence, if students are aware, and the second is resolution, if in fact there's verbal harassment which takes place. The articles that I shared with the program subcommittee talked about the balancing security with privacy. And in both cases, video and audio recording on buses is legal. It comes under Chapter 272, Section 99, which is way too long for any of us to have to go through. But, and we've also spoken with attorney Michael Joyce. If there are signs on the bus, if he recommends that we send a letter home when we're ready to implement, and if we place the issue into our student handbooks, then we will have covered our responsibility as far as the law is concerned with respect to having surveillance on our particular buses.
Can I ask a question? What about the privacy? What, why on a public bus is it...
Well, it's a, there, let me go to the...
Who cares?
Yep. Boston had tried to implement it in 2014. Boston Globe came out quite against it. They refer to it as an editorial and extreme initiative that unnecessarily infringes on private conversations. Video recordings are routine, they're useful when identifying gross misconduct, but audio recordings are different in tone and tenor. They argue it's not even clear as to whether or not surveillance, audio surveillance, will keep students safer. So what I'm pointing out is that there is a little bit more sensitivity publicly to the notion of audio recording than to the video. Okay? In terms of some of the technicalities, it's reassuring to know that Grant is on it. As I said at the program, I'll try to translate the parts I understand. Each bus will have two cameras installed mid-bus to leverage wide-angle lenses. That the DVR units and hard drives are mechanically secured and have a physical key in order for them to access, and access exclusively will be in the hands of Information Technology, who in turn will take the recordings, put them on a flash drive, put them into a secure Google Doc, and then share them with the party's principal of the direct transportation. But they, like our surveillance operations in our buildings, they will be controlling the transfer of the information should we need to avail ourselves of it. There's a panic event marker button, so that if something should occur, a bus driver can go like this, which is like bookmark in the recording, so they go straight to the time at which an incident seems to have taken place. As I'm suggesting, we will be identifying in no uncertain terms who has access to the DVR, who maintains that security, and that will be Administration and IT. Some particulars, recording modes. You can set it so that the cameras and the audio become active upon ignition of the bus. Or you can set a timer, a schedule for them to go on. Or you can have either. There's the issue of, well, how long after the bus stops should the recording go before it shuts off? A, to ensure that the buses are safe, B, to ensure that the bus drivers are taking all necessary post-transport routines, and then checking the bus and doing all that kind of stuff. And we'll work off of that. The off-delay, the number of minutes after the ignition's turned off, the battery will allow the recording to go as many as 199 minutes. There are a number of fault indicators, and fault beepers, and so on and so forth. As far as the bus drivers are concerned, they need to know that if the light comes on or the beeper goes off, there may be an issue or malfunction with the system. And then their job is to report that. They get back to IT, and then Information Technology will attend to the situation.
Is there such thing, maybe from MASC, as a bus audio/video chain policy? I know it's fairly new, so...
The one in, the file ECA from the MASC is relatively generic and does not seem to address that. I have a copy of a policy from Northampton, which does take it into consideration. It's a file ECA, and it starts off with the MASC, some of the letters, I'm sorry. It starts off with the MASC's policy, but it talks very specifically about that. Grant, for his part, has also provided us with about five other policies, a couple from Connecticut, one or two from Rhode Island, and one or two from Massachusetts. So between now and the next program subcommittee meeting, we'll be working together to put together a draft policy, which the committee and the full committee, the subcommittee and full committee can review, and obviously then take it to further legal review as well, and make a recommendation that that should become part of our policy.
Potential negotiations?
Sorry?
Any potential negotiations?
Yeah. But as far as the, yes, but as far as the bus drivers and their direct involvement with it outside of pushing a button, and just like the dashboard in your car, if you see the U sign and your tire's low, they need to tell somebody so that we can have IT attend to the situation.
We transport kids up to sixth grade, right? So this is just K to sixth, correct?
There's eighth graders...
Kedda's not involved?
Eighth graders on seventh and eighth as well, if they choose to take the bus.
If they take the bus.
So without objection, I will move forward with the motion that the subcommittee voted unanimously to approve the use of audio and video equipment on the school buses. That's it.
If the conversation's gonna be a recorded, I mean, come to vote now, I think that, given the way that surveillance is happening all over the place, it'd be nice to let our kids have a few minutes where they can have a conversation with their peers and not be on a tape somewhere, you know, being recorded. I don't think it's the necessary step for their safety or for incident reporting. I think there, it just, it strikes a lot of nerves for me, both fundamentally and from a practical standpoint. So if it's using the audio capabilities of the system, then I don't know. If it was the video capabilities of the system only, then I'd be in favor of it.
Can we, before we vote on this, actually, the audio may be so lousy. Can we actually see?
Here?
See him here?
Yes.
Before we vote on it, so we know what we're voting on?
Of course.
I don't believe they've all been installed and it made, been made operational. Yeah, I would use a, you know, a, just a data that allows you to see. You may not be able to, maybe just...
You can't discern at all.
You may not be able to understand anything that's said unless it's like loud screaming or something. I'd like to know that, but I, I don't, I, I did a really good point.
Right.
I think if a student is on a public school bus, there is no privacy on a public bus. And these days with so many verbal bullying going on, there's just a lot going on on our buses, and sometimes I just think for the safety of all the kids, I know from having audio as well as video monitoring with them. They'll all be well aware of it. They can always text each other because they all have cell phones, but they want to keep their conversation private. But I don't have any objection at all to having a summer school buses.
Well, I recognize that there are concerns with video or audio recording, everything that's ever said everywhere, because that seems to be the world we live in. My job during the day is to, to work with victims who are victimized through bullying and assaults and things like that. And I can tell you that the core system relies heavily on electronic evidence, whether it be the Facebook or Snapchat that disappears in three seconds after it's open. You know, there's a lot of hurdles when you're trying to help victims and keep victims safe. So when we're talking about kids at this age, I personally agree with Michelle that there is no right to privacy on a public school bus paid by taxpayers, knowing that anyone can be on the bus to hear anyone's conversation. You don't, there's no expectation that no one's going to hear your conversation unless you're whispering, which the audio probably wouldn't pick up to begin with. But I just believe in this day and age, knowing all the concerns we have, especially with children, that audio and video should be in full force on our buses, because it's only going to help everybody and probably not hurt anyone. Because I can't believe, I can't even imagine what type of conversation between that age group of kids should be protected. So although I'm kind of leery of doing this the way we're doing it, I think I'd rather see a policy come forward. I think I'd want, like Tony said, maybe a little field trip to see how they work, only because there's other implications of all of this, audio/video, not just for the safety of our kids. But if we are to vote tonight, I would support it, but I just think that we could do better in getting more information to us to have a better discussion about it, especially where I can see we're already torn on two sides already.
Yeah. There's no, if I may, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna, that, and the other question is, meanwhile, I have full faith in the confidentiality of the IT department. I think there needs to be guidelines of how action moves if, you know, a kid is, you know, a couple of kids there talking, and they're talking about, you know, how much they dislike the substitute teacher or how much they, you know, when is this going to be, you know, when are we going to be viewing these tapes? Or thumb drives or whatever they are? When are they going to be getting viewed or only during incidences? And then what is the chain of command where the reporting goes through? I think that all that needs to be put into place before we move on.
I think that our subcommittee is pretty much incident-based, not to have somebody monitoring as it goes or even reviewing after, unless there's a reason.
I would assume that, because nobody has time, but we don't have any chain of command of how...
Well, it's the same chain of command, in essence, that we use for our surveillance cameras in the building.
But to take it a step further, we've already gotten notice from the bus drivers that they are not agreeing to using any audio or video in any disciplinary action at this point until it's negotiated. So this is a bigger topic, too. It's not just a matter of approving the audio and video, but there's a lot of hows, whys, and whats that aren't answered yet, as far as I'm concerned from the school committee member. So I'm almost asked to table this vote now, because you're already getting a feel of what the concerns are, and then address it at a later date when things are more in place or discussed or...
I was going to say that, is this no, we don't have to rush out and do this tomorrow, but the school committee needs to know, and ultimately needs to feel comfortable with the decision that they make. I respectfully request that we go ahead and make the materials operational, because there's a timeline there. But right now, we're not using these things until it's clarified and we have a full sense of what the committee feels is the right way to perform.
Is there training required for bus drivers to know how to do all this? Are they going to be responsible? How is that?
Well, what they're, they're going to be responsible, as I mentioned before, if there's an incident, they, let's say there's a verbal assault going on. They're responsible for pushing a button, so there's a bookmark. And the other piece they're responsible for is that if, like, forgive me for repeating, like, on the dashboard of your car, if the light goes off, that means that there's something wrong with the machine. They would report that, put in a ticket, somebody with the Director of Transportation would put in a ticket, and IT would then come and make the repair.
We also discussed at the subcommittee whether we would just approve the video and not the audio to make it, so we can table it and then get more information and come back with...
To agree, we can move forward if the committee were to vote on the video. We could move forward with the video and then wait and decide what the committee wants to do around video. That option does exist?
Do the high school cameras have audio? Were the school cameras, not the school campus have audio? Not just high school, it's all the schools now.
Can I move to amend the motion?
Sure.
That if just the audio would be struck, and then be for a video, sign of video surveillance only at this point?
I second that motion.
Any word of discussion? All in favor?
All in favor. Oh, on the amendment.
Oh, let's vote on the amended motion?
On just the amendment.
On just the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so...
So now the motion's amended, so now you vote on it.
Motion as amended.
Motion as a whole.
As amended.
Yeah. Okay, so we are now holding on the amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. The second item's pretty straightforward. We had discussed that there was a little confusion, not confusion, but lack of clarity in the handbook that was inconsistent with the wellness guidelines. And so there's a minor change to the student handbook only, which is to add the words in parentheses, "for student safety only," after "loss of privileges," example, recess. So we say, "for student safety only." So the full motion is, I, that this program subcommittee recommends the full committee approve the new language in the student handbooks regarding possible consequences for inappropriate behaviors, stating, quote, "loss of privileges," example, recess, in parentheses, "for student safety only," and parentheses, "student activity in after-school work sessions, et cetera." I salute. Second. So as I explained, this is just to make it clear that it was kind of vague in the handbook, not vague, the handbook said "loss of privileges," they could take away recess for any reason. We wanted to be very clear that it's only for student safety reasons. Any questions? Okay, any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have other action to take care of. Acceptance of grants. The first grant is from Gloucester Education Foundation in the amount of $1,200, which includes $700 for the hydroponic studies at O'Malley, $500 for the West Parish Project to replace cafeteria trays with new trays made of biodegradable materials.
So much. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the second list of grants are from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and maybe Mr. Bar can take us through these grants.
The new grant workbook, these used to all be separate grants, and it has this year been consolidated to a single massive and unwieldy workbook. And when I got the request for some more detailed backup, it's just impossible to print anything from it. They redesigned it with, you know, little pink windows that give you help hands, turquoise windows that give you helpful tips. So around the entire Excel sheet, it's a, it's just a very colorful display of all kinds of boxes and call-out things. So it just, it doesn't, you couldn't print even on large form, not very large form. So I tried to summarize and give budget categories that this was much more readable. So Title 1, $579,853. This is one that you've heard of for a number of years, but it's based on our low-income percentage, and it's intended to strengthen instruction for, particularly for these populations. We are, for the first time, school-wide Title 1 in all five elementary schools, which means our percentage has risen to a point where all five elementary schools qualify. And instead of targeted assistance, which we used to do, which is you had to identify the exact students and exactly what was happening, we're now school-wide in all five. And it makes things a lot easier, means that all students in the school can benefit from all Title 1 activities. And so by far, our largest grant... It's by far our largest grant. And the biggest part of this grant, as you noticed, goes to fund the five Title 1 teachers, I'm sorry, four Title 1 teachers and health and debt. That's $387,000 and $101,000. So most of this goes to teachers and then to paraprofessionals. And so we have, I'm sorry, it's, apologies, it is five teachers and two paraprofessionals. And so that's almost the entire grant right there is in those staff members. They provide interventions in those schools, mostly literacy, though we do have one working as a math interventionist. We have a small amount of leftover, $5989, that is dedicated to consultants' supplies and materials. That's Title 1.
Did you make a motion to accept the Title 1 grant in the amount of $507,853?
So moved.
Title 2A, support our grant. Oops, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Why don't we take it all together?
No, why don't we do them all together? What do you mean?
That isn't your call. I would like, I'll people on Title 2A, $120,000, $809. It's about the same as last year. Title 1 is up a bit, about forty, forty something thousand, Title 1 is fair and even. This supports primary professional development, teacher leadership teams, co-teaching initiatives. At every time we have new curricular mandates, new frameworks, we need to realign curriculum. Science, for example, this supports that kind of work. There's a small amount in program administration, secretarial managing the funds and the activities. Large number is in teacher leader teams, our science leaders, our math leaders, our literacy leaders, all of those teachers who work to align curriculum and to provide embedded coaching in those schools are all paid for by this. $47759 is primarily for professional development, services, our co-teaching support, math professional development, our EL program, professional development, that all comes from there, and a small amount for conference fees. Title 3, did you want to do the rest of the multi-act?
Okay.
Title 3, $24,000, this is about the same. This supports our English learner program. And it's, since it's a rather, rather small grant, almost all of it goes to support a part-time instructional aide at the high school who works directly with, supports students in the relatively new SEI Shelter English Immersion classrooms at the high school. And then we have a little bit, $4,056, to support tutoring after school and before school for English learners. Title 4 was, is, has increased significantly from last year. Last year was the first time, it was $13,000 or so, it's up to $39. In some ways, it's a little bit of a catch-all grant. It supports well-rounded educational opportunities, which is relatively broad, safe and healthy students, and support effective use of technology. There is a push in this particular grant to support the new social studies frameworks and civics education. So civics framework alignment is also going to be a mock congress team at the middle school. Teachers worked very hard this summer and will be working throughout the year to realign the middle school curriculum and we'll start pushing that into the high school. We also have a social studies consultant who's been working with the middle school and with the high school department. PBIS support, the positive behavioral intervention strategies. System strategies. And the May Center contracted with the May Center to provide support for our schools. Technology training, LMS means learning management system, we're piloting a comprehensive, interactive student learning management system. It also supports all students at the middle school to be able to go to the Ed Kennedy Center field trip, Senator and Training Field Trips, transportation as well as other classes. Those are the four grants.
Okay. All right. So we are, we approved the first one, so you made a motion to approve the Title 2A, Title 3, and Title 4 in the amounts of $120,809, $24,103, $39,783 respectively.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
About the grant for the English language position. If we did not get this grant, we would probably have to dig into our budget elsewhere because we still have to provide the services? Yes?
Yeah, yeah. We've been lucky to have this one to support this, but out of the regular budget, we've grown to, I, we have, we have four, six, seven staff members now providing English learner program services, which is up quite a bit. I think we, you know, grown from two over the last four years. So that's been borne by the regular budget. But so, this does help.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next action item is approval of the S M V contract effective July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2019. All in all sense.
So this is a contract that we discussed in executive session at our last school committee meeting, however, we forgot to vote it in public session after. So it was approved, we looked at the terms at an executive session. It was a vote of six to one, I think, yes, five to one and one abstention in the executive session. So we did vote on this already, so it's just here for procedural sake to vote in public. So I guess I'll make a motion to approve the S M V contract effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstaining?
I don't think the vote goes unless.
Forward, favor.
It's good.
Forward, favor, want to oppose and want to abstention. Okay. Discussions on, and other communication in all business. I'll report on this. I think she's the school voting authority.
The request for services for the designer for the East Gloucester slash, that's project, is out on the street. We had some conversation with the MSBA. Normally, these applications, requests go out for about two weeks. They asked originally that we put it out four weeks, the reason being that the last four districts that have advertised have been getting very few submissions and three or less, so they wanted to expand and create more time. I spoke with them again the next day and they said, well, let's just do it three weeks, that way we won't interrupt the October 16th date, which is when the designer selection panel meets in Boston. And hopefully at that time, we will have a designer coming on board for the project. That's about it.
When do they?
Oh, one more thing. The walkthrough, those, some companies came by Tuesday, we walked through Better, East Gloucester First and then Veterans on Tuesday. I don't know just how many companies there were, but I wouldn't say there were one or four or five.
When do we vote? Or is there a vote on location?
Vote on.
Location. This is, I've been talking about designing, I don't know where it's going.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be a while. I mean, once we have the designer, then they go to work and they will look at, the first thing they'll look at is this, is they have to treat it as if we're just replacing East Gloucester that is formally the MSBA expects. Unofficially, MSBA also knows, because we wrote it into the statement of interest, we wrote it into the request for services, they know we're interested for consolidation. All that site work will take place post-October 16th, once the designers have the contract. We can expect that to take, you know, that a part of a year. So that answers, I hope, answers your question.
So moved. Enough. Thank you.
Okay. All right. In our packets, there is a letter to Chief John McCarthy from the Chairperson of Hope regarding the changing pattern and enforcement at the West Parish School.
Can we get a report on, do you have, able to report on what is being enforced over there?
Yeah, there has been a police presence except for Thursday of last week because there were some emergency calls. Officer Hicks has been out there and there is, there's no left turn in, no left turn out, or right turn in, right turn out. Either way, there are signs, temporary signs that have been put up. We had a little bit of a complication because the, there was a hope on the part of the principal to hold parents out of the West Parish driveway until like 2:55, five minutes before dismissal. The primary reason is for safety, so that emergency vehicles could get in if they had to. That was posing problems and the cars were getting backed up almost to the highway and that was some red flags. Last two days, we're now letting them in anywhere, if they're showing up at 2:30, we're letting them in in order to ensure that if there's a line on the West Parish side, the north side of Concord Street, that that line does not go beyond the curb, because if it goes beyond that curb past, you know, the firehouse, there's a safety issue. And that, there's two safety issues. One is the emergency access and the other is safety on the road. Right now, safety on the road is the priority. And we'll have a conversation with the fire department about inside, but the last two days have been sort of a suck.
And there's no more parking on?
There's been no more parking. What happens when the police go away after this week will remain to be seen, but hopefully behavior is changing.
What is the plan if someone does park there?
We're going to probably, I guess, talk to the police and say we're having a problem. We don't have jurisdiction. It will, I'm just talking to them, not to you. We don't have the jurisdiction and we need to make sure that, you know, the traffic can flow and that it's safe and the traffic can go both ways.
We have to make sure that no one tells the department or CCAD. We have to make sure.
They know not to park on CCAD.
Yeah. We have to make sure too, the emails that go out, go out correctly. There's a lot of stuff, but hopefully we'll get all these little nooks and crannies fixed. So.
I think it's worth noting, so I heard from some West Gloucester residents over this, and they're very appreciative that Dr. Sapphire personally went out there.
Yes.
To oversee and make sure that little issue was done. They're, you know, they're very happy to see that he came out and personally helped make sure once nobody's, don't pass that along.
I can hardly check. Yes. And that was also from Wood Counselor of Five, Sean Nolan, said thank you very much. He, you know, he, if you know, he's very quiet, he never complains, he just goes to the source and he says, "Don't worry, mayor, I'll handle it." He talked to Dr. Sapphire, boom, and Dr. Sapphire was there and it was handled.
Couldn't do it today because I have another game to play, as much as I can.
And I always say, make sure that we have everything in writing.
We have video and audio.
Yeah. People need to get complaints, put them in fire.
The one item of new business I wanted, John, wanted me to mention is the email he sent to all of us on his communication with the chairman of the school committee at Rockport, Colleen Hugan, and just to reiterate that what they would like as next steps is, is a study between the three districts, including Manchester Essex. He does not believe that Rockport has reached out to Manchester Essex as a district, but just so we know that that, that that's what their last communication to him was on the topic of Rockport.
Isn't Rockport, let's see if there's a large originalization possible and what we had initially done with?
Okay.
I just want to start.
We are going into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation involving non-renewal of the teacher. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And we will only come out with a preface to a junk. Correct. Which means, K P L T V, thank you so much.